I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Rattone City Commission to order. Can we have roll call, please, Desiree?
Sure. Mayor Sagata.
Present.
Mayor Protem Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Present.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Could you all please join me in the Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I thank everyone for coming out this evening. Couple of announcements. All city offices will be closed January 17th in observance of Martin Luther King today. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, January 25th, 2022, 6:00 p.m. here in the chambers. This time, we will take items from citizens present. I would just say that if you're here to speak about something that's on the agenda, wait till that item comes up. If not, we will take any comments.
Mayor, if I could speak up here, please, we do have an item that we had talked about previously, and we anticipate action on this item in an upcoming meeting tonight. We do have Mr. Williams, Brian Williams, here attending the meeting from SpectraCom. He is involved in potential assignment of a lease for radio tower equipment that's located on city property, generally on the Old Pass. Historically, we have had a lease with CNC Communications, that is, the Mayfield family, for decades and decades. CNC has asked the city to consider this transfer. We would propose drafting of a brand-new lease. You have the old lease in your packet, and I have asked Mr. Williams to address the commission, just so you can become familiar with the company and the proposal for the new lease, what kind of business is conducted there, or similarities to the way CNC had operated. So I'd like to call up Mr. Williams to come forward, and then, I think, for the commission, not typically something we would do under this item, but this is a chance for you to ask questions that may come to your mind about the lease or the operation of the site. So, Mayor, with your permission, I would turn it over to Mr. Williams, and I've just asked him to give you all the information regarding his company and his proposal.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you, everybody. I'm Brian Williams. I'm on SpectraCom. We're based out of Alamosa. We're also in Taos, which is where I'm based, and we recently purchased the radio tower up past Goat Hill and related equipment from the Mayfields, and be taking over operations there and doing upgrades and fixing everything up and adding some equipment there as well, offering our services here to the area, mobile radio service for business customers, et cetera. We've, our company's been around for 30-plus years in Alamosa. I bought that company several years ago, and I also have another company based in Albuquerque that's been around for some time. And we service public safety, business customers, et cetera, tower service, everything related to communications, microwave, even Wi-Fi-related stuff for commercial use, that sort of thing. So, anyway, just wanted to say hello to everybody, let you know we're here, what we're doing, and really appreciate your consideration on this, and we look forward to continuing to keep up that tower and as a resource for the community and local businesses, whoever might need it, including the city. If you guys have any need for communications up on a higher location, et cetera. So, again, I really appreciate it, and if you have any questions, please hit me up. And also, Mr. Barry has my contact info, and I'm sure can share it with anybody that would like to follow up later with emails or a call.
Any questions for Mr. Williams?
Do you have somebody that's going to be stationed here constantly, or is it just going to be a come-and-go type maintenance and stuff?
Yeah, we don't have enough going on here to have somebody here full-time, but we'll be over here frequently. We also have customers in Trinidad, Vegas, Cimarron, et cetera. So we're here pretty often.
Oh, you're welcome.
Brian, I think maybe we had heard that there may be a plan during the upgrades to maybe network this site with some other sites and maybe upgrade some of the technology. I don't know a lot about it, but maybe you can give us a little more information on that.
Sure, yeah. I won't keep your time too much, and again, I appreciate your allowing me this time. Yeah, I'm talking to Baca Valley about getting the fiber connected. Apparently, they are, have just, or just completing a purchase of fiber that runs along the Old Pass Road from CenturyLink, so they're taking that over. And I've been talking with their engineers about getting us connected there at the tower site, which make it more attractive to other customers, like cell companies that might want to come on. I guess AT&amp;T used to be on there at one point. They've moved off for whatever reason, but that's, having fiber there is a big attraction for anybody that needs connectivity. And from there, we can microwave out to other tower sites, et cetera. And so our radio system here, we're going to be tying in with the rest of our system in northern New Mexico, which is mainly in Taos County and Colfax, Moreno Valley, to, again, provide wide-area coverage for those customers that need it, so.
Very good. Any other questions, comments?
And the plan would be to add equipment onto the existing tower? You'd use the existing tower, or is there anything planned with the towers?
Yes. No, well, it's a good tower. It appears to be in good condition. I'll have my tower crew come up here in the next few weeks and get up there, and there's some things that need to be fixed and old stuff that needs to be removed and cleaned up and everything, inspections and all that. So we'll be doing all that stuff, too, here in the coming weeks and months.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay. Thanks a lot, you guys.
Thank you, Brian.
Appreciate you showing up. Anyone else wish to address the commission at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the business items. Item A, deliberate and act on reorganization of the city commission. It's something that we do after an election. Primarily, it's mayor and mayor pro tem positions that are up for grabs and that, as I like to say. So I would take any nominations at this time.
Mayor, if I may, fellow commissioners, I'd like to see if we could keep the current mayor and mayor pro tem as it is right now. I'd like to make a motion to that effect.
And there is no seconds required?
No seconds.
Are there any other nominations? Would entertain a motion to close nominations?
So, yeah.
All righty. Guess we still have to vote, Michaeline?
Yeah, you can do a roll call.
Okay. Desiree, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure.
To keep the positions as they are.
Mayor Sagata.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Yes.
All right. I just want to say thank you for the vote of confidence and not trying to speak for Mayor Protem. I'll let her say a few words, but we appreciate this commission and this community, and we strive to continue working in a direction that's going to put us on the map even better. So, thank you for your vote of confidence.
Yes, indeed. You know, I mean, we all work really hard, and it's, there's not too much extra work to being mayor pro tem, but give an occasional hello to groups when the mayor can't do it. But I appreciate it. I appreciate your confidence, and thank you, and I appreciate all of you. You guys work hard.
Absolutely. All righty. Item B, deliberate and act on appointment of commission members to city boards. Mr. Barry, would you like to give us an introduction?
Mayor and commissions, this is a procedure that we also bring to the commission following every election. And of course, in the city, we have a number of boards and commissions that perform specific tasks for the city commission. A lot of times, their recommendations will wind up back here. Some of those boards and commissions act as a quasi-independent body. You see, I have a list in front of you of boards and commissions and staff that's put together. I think certainly we can talk about this list. One thing is, we only have one appointment to extraterritorial zoning authority. You see it on the list a couple of times there, but that is necessarily an elected official that would vote on the zoning authority, along with two county commissioners, in lieu of every zoning issue going to the county and the city commission. There could be boards that you want to talk about, or committee assignments, or board assignments, or liaison assignments, that you can certainly add to this and take action on tonight. One thing that Commissioner Chatterley and I talked about earlier today was in the Economic Development Strategic Plan, we identified six task force that would perform certain functions, and Commissioner Chatterley has taken the lead on the outdoor recreation task force, done a lot of work over the last couple of years. You all can consider what you want to do with those, but you can add to the list or do what you want to on the list. Now, I would state that, over the years, the list has narrowed down. For example, there have been changes to Rattone Housing Authority, now the Northeast, or the North Regional Housing Authority. We don't have a local board, so we do not have a commissioner assigned to that. There have been several things that have happened over the years, but you have discretion to assign board duties amongst you, however you would like to see it. Generally speaking, we try to kind of equalize the load between commissioners to cover things outside of city commission meetings. The only, the comment I have, Mayor, is that according to city ordinance, the mayor automatically has a seat on Rattone Public Service Company. The mayor pro tem automatically has a seat on Rattone Waterworks, and we are open for appointment of the other, respectively, a commissioner to each one of those boards, but those two seats are filled by the action that you took earlier on the agenda. That's all I have, Mayor.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Barry. So, I think at this time, we'll go through the list, and if you feel like you want to be a part of this, one of these boards, please express your interest. If we have more than one person, I guess we could vote on it, or you guys could, we could all work it out, however you all see fit. I would say we could probably come to a conclusion on our own as a commission. All right, so, that being said, on the RPS board, as Mr. Barry said, I do have a position on that as mayor. We do have a slot for another commissioner, so currently, that is filled by Mr. Jacomo. Is there any other interest in the RPS board, or who is interested? Don, I'm assuming you're still there? Any other interests? Okay, Mr. Jacomo. Rattone Water Board, as per ordinance, Mayor Protem Lindy Schuster is a member of that board. Currently, the old slot is held by Commissioner Chavez.
I would like to keep that position.
Is there any other interest? All right, seeing none, Mr. Chavez, you've got that. Financial Advisory Committee, currently filled by Mr. Chavez. Is there any interest in that position, or Mr. Chavez, would you like to continue?
I'll continue, unless somebody wants it.
Mr. Chavez, it looks like you've got it.
Before we continue on past this, since I noticed that Commissioner Chatterley is on like 75 other things after this, are you comfortable with being involved in those?
In the ones?
The ones that we have listed that you're part of?
Coming up. I am not able to make the lodgers tax meetings, and so that's definitely one I won't. And then, one of those is a typo that shouldn't be on there twice, and I think the ETC should go back to the mayor, so.
I think we made that accommodation while I was out.
Yeah, exactly. So it won't be as many as it looks like.
Okay, all right.
All right, so next on the list is Senior Citizens Board. Currently, Commissioner Chatterley is the liaison there. Laurie, would you like to continue in that spot?
Sure.
Anybody else?
No, I was going to volunteer if she didn't want to have so many boards, but.
We're cutting them down as we go.
Right, yeah, so, yeah, no, you go ahead. You've done a great job.
We appreciate her over at the senior center.
Yes.
She's been very, very helpful. Extraterritorial Zoning Authority and the ETZ Zoning Authority, same thing, as we just discussed, that's generally filled by the mayor, so I would step back into that if there's no objections.
That's great, yeah. And I'd like to say that Commissioner Chatterley has done a great job on the North Central New Mexico Economic Development Board.
I'm happy to continue. I think we definitely should act and nominate an alternate, because they have such a hard time making quorum for those meetings, and once in a while, you know, I'm not able to attend.
Sure.
So if we wanted to, if you guys are still willing to have me do that, and then if someone would be willing to be an alternate, I think that would be helpful for their organization.
Yeah, I could be an alternate there.
All righty. Any objections to that?
None.
All right, Library Board. Currently, that is filled by Commissioner Jacomo. Is there any interest from anyone else?
Continue on.
Okay. Commissioner Jacomo continues on there. Lodgers Tax Liaison, I have been one of the liaisons there. I think originally, it was kind of what we just did with the economic, Laurie and I kind of covered each other there. Laurie, I think has just stated that you'd probably like to get off of that, so we would look for an alternate there as well. I will go ahead and continue on that one, but if we could get a volunteer for an alternate there.
I can probably step up to that.
Okay.
Unless somebody up in this one, if he wants it.
I don't see anybody jumping through here. Very good. Thank you, Laurie. And, go ahead.
I was going to say, I didn't know if we wanted to officially add the outdoor recreation task force on there as a liaison position, or however you want to do that, or if we want to wait and look at all those economic development things at one time. I don't care either way, and if someone else is more interested in the task force, I'm willing to, you know.
Why don't we have Mr. Barry put us a list together for that? I would like to have you continue, though, on the outdoor.
Yeah, I would, too. I think you're doing a great job there.
Yeah, and then Sagata, you can put us a list together of the other ones, and we can.
Certainly will.
Give you them up as well. And then the last we've got on tonight is Extraterritorial Zoning Commission Liaison. And per commission action back in July, we assigned Mr. Barry as that. Is there any objections to him continuing?
Yeah.
Can I object?
No.
Okay, I think we've got everything filled. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for taking the time. Okay, Item C, deliberate and act on approval of minutes for regular meeting held on December 14th, 2021. Desiree, I will be abstaining from this vote.
Okay.
I believe we had a fun typo that you already corrected.
Yes, ma'am.
I will move to approve the meeting minutes from December 14th.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Okay.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Item D, deliberate and act on Resolution 2021-74, adopting a travel policy relating to the reimbursement and travel for per diem and mileage expenses for public officers and employees of the city while on official city business. This was postponed from the December number. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, I believe that we would like to ask the commission to postpone action on this until the January 25th meeting. This is an important policy that reflects generally changes that the state may take in per diem policy, and we're still doing a little work on the policy, gathering some information, so I would request postponement.
Make a motion to postpone.
No, second.
We have a motion, second, to postpone until January 25th. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Item E, deliberate and act on Resolution 2022-01, public meeting policy. Again, this is something we do beginning of every year. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, commission, this is Resolution 01, every year, public meeting policy. It has to do with compliance with the State's Open Meetings Act, and generally, we're advising the public that the city commission will meet on dates that they can expect, the second and fourth Tuesday of every month at 6:00 p.m. And that's generally what we're doing. We talk about how we post notice of the meetings, agendas, so that citizens can know when that's coming out, look at those agendas, and if they choose to show up and make a comment to the commission on an agenda item, they have adequate notice. So, everything in the policy reflects the requirements of state statute, and we bring it to you for your consideration and request that you adopt this resolution.
Okay, any comments or questions? I have one question, Michaeline, you might be able to answer. You know, when this pandemic started back in 2020, there was talk about adding Zoom meetings to these resolutions. Is that something we need to do, or?
Well, so the one revision to this policy is Section 10, and this was some language that we didn't include last year, but I think Waterworks had adopted it, and so we added this section as well. And so it says, notwithstanding any other provisions of this resolution, meeting locations, in-person meetings, posting requirements, or any other deviation made necessary or advisable by any public health emergency or conditions, may be made while considering guidance provided by the New Mexico Attorney General's Office for public meetings during public health emergencies. So it's kind of broad, I think.
It would probably cover it, though.
If the pandemic continues, then there probably will be further guidance from the AG's office, and we would just follow that guidance. So that was added. And then also, the statute addresses if an emergency meeting is held. Let me see if I can find that section real quick. We added a line at the end of that. Let's see. Well, there's a requirement, and like I said, oh, here it is. I think it is Section 8. So at the end of Section 8, we added the language that if we were to call an emergency meeting, there's a requirement within the statute that within 10 days of taking action on an emergency matter, the city clerk will notify the Attorney General's Office. So we never had that language in there, so we did add that as well to comply with the statutory requirements. Other than that, our policy has not changed.
All righty, any other comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know. In Section 9, I know we've had this in the past, but I would think that when it says by means of a conference telephone or similar communications equipment, that that would probably encompass Zoom, if necessary, just because it is a conference and people can call into it and listen.
Absolutely, yeah, I think.
Yeah, and I think we kind of felt that that broad language as well.
Enough for a Zoom.
Would cover the Zoom or any other type of communications.
I only brought it up because the city of Albuquerque is apparently having issues with Zoom again.
What type of issues are those?
Whether or not it's legal.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll kind of keep that on our radar and see what the outcome of that is.
They didn't seem, most of the counselors down there didn't seem too concerned with it, but I did see it on the news the other day. All righty, any other comments?
I'll make motion to adopt Resolution 2021-01, public meeting policy.
Okay, go ahead. Have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-01. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Item F, deliberate and act on appeal to city commission on vacant building determination for property located at 1101 South Second Street. Action postponed from December 14th meeting. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commissioner, this is an opportunity for the owners of the building located at 1101 South Second Street to appeal the administrative determination that that building is vacant building and would be required to register under the vacant building ordinance and meet the requirements of that ordinance. And there is an annual requirement to register, there is an annual requirement to pay a fee for a vacant building. The owners have submitted a letter to the commission. We did hear this at the December meeting as well, and we did schedule the appeal there. However, the owners were not present, and the commission discussed at that time that we will provide another opportunity for the owners to attend and address the commission to provide their appeal to you. But you do have information in your packet that does provide documentation of the nature of their appeal. I do not believe that the group is represented at the meeting tonight. I would point out to the commission that while we set this up for tonight, there was discussion about hearing the appeal on January 25th as well, so I'll pass that along to you. However, the property owners have been notified of the hearing of the appeal at tonight's meeting. So I can provide you any information or answer any questions that you have. I think that's a quick summary of the nature of the appeal. It is an appeal of an administrative decision by staff.
Okay. Any comments, questions?
I will state and ask Commissioner Chavez, I mean, he was the one who, you did make a motion to postpone it till the meeting on the 25th, not to be discussed tonight in the next meeting, so I think, since you made that motion, I'd like to know if you're okay with discussing that tonight.
Well, I, personally, I think that the requirements that are in the ordinance need to be met, and we gave them ample time to come here to us for both times, so I think that it should be, just go on with it.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion to either accept the appeal or deny the appeal.
The action would be to uphold the administrative decision that it is a vacant building that would require registration, or the commission could take the action to the contrary, that it would not be ruled a vacant building. That's the basic decision. I would say that the commission can do anything that you want to here as well. You could attach conditions to this particular case. We can talk about requirements in the ordinance for making this determination. We've used the available information. I think that generally, the vacant building ordinance is new to the city of Rattone, and we're not surprised that there's a couple of things that we may want to talk about. I would just throw out there that I would anticipate that we would talk about. that we would talk about potential uh improvements to the uh ordinance between now and October. So we can have that discussion here as well. I would state to the commission that the ordinance is working well. Uh, I think that uh people are surprised that they get the notice from the city because it's not something that we've had before. A lot of these buildings have been vacant uh for many years, some of them a decade. We've come across buildings that have been vacant vacant for more than 30 years. And so I think it's a comes as a surprise initially to uh property owners. And a significant number of property owners have questioned uh the application of the ordinance to their particular situation. We've seen a lot of different situations. Uh, but however, I I think we're open for a discussion of the terms of the ordinance. And in this specific case, uh, dealing with the operation of a commercial business, I would just state from my perspective, the intent of the ordinance is that in a commercial building, there is an active operating uh commercial enterprise occupying the building. So that's the question, not only here, but on a number of commercial buildings. Maybe that's something that we uh want to uh talk about some wordsmithing on. So I would offer that to the commission.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Uh, I did talk to the code enforcement officer and the community facilities manager, and that there's a uh problem with the right next to the property, where they have a fence that's kind of torn down and is unsightly. So I think that we should deny this at this time.
Uphold the decision of the of the city.
Of the city. I'll make that as a motion that we uphold the city's determination.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to uphold the city's determination that this is a vacant property. Any further discussion? Mr. Berry, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Mayor Scotta?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Alrighty, thank you.
Um, Mayor, if you don't mind, I I did take the liberty of speaking to um a contact I have in Santa Fe. He's a retired, uh, she worked in in the legal advising um team um in the Capitol Building and worked on um, you know, she's a wordsmith. She thought the ordinance that we have is a good ordinance. Um, and she did suggest that we do exactly what Mr. Berry has suggested and just kind of do some a few revisions on particularly the um the fee scale and kind of tone it down. But she she felt like she stated that there are several other communities in the state that are doing similar ordinances. And um, and and it's a good idea to clean up your community, so.
Okay.
You know, and FYI, this is the first time in what, 40 years that we've had a code enforcement officer that's actively out there among the and taking care of the thing, and so it needs to be done.
No, I think it's a it's a good program. It's something that we've needed for a while. Alrighty, item G, deliberate and act on and on additional capital outlay funding priorities for 2022 legislative session. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, this is an unusual request. It's coming from the city manager for uh your consideration. I don't think we've ever uh done this before, but this is a very different year as far as funding uh capital outlay or infrastructure or capital projects in general uh in Santa Fe. We're hearing conversation uh from legislators and the administration that I have not heard in my time around the city uh because there is a a lot of funding around. And so uh also, we've got some feedback on it on uh previous requests. Now, previously, we talked about eight requests for capital outlay. I have submitted those requests. Uh, some of those may be funded in different ways. I think they're they're all good requests, but some of our priority requests um may work through different sources of funding. What I'm suggesting to the commission is that we uh add a couple of things that we've worked on recently uh that have come up really since the time that we have talked about our priorities and the uh infrastructure capital improvement plan. And we put these forth in support of a couple of things that uh have become, I I would say, important to us here in uh in in recent months. And in response to some of the information that we have received uh prior to this uh legislative session. And so I have listed two recommendations for your consideration. Uh, I provided a memorandum to you in your packet. I'll summarize these real quickly, but it would be my recommendation that the city add a capital outlay request in the amount of $2,500,000 uh for the Kearney School Film Production Facility. That would be dedicated to building renovations, construction, equipment and furnishings of that facility. I'll give you a little more information on that. Uh, we did have a phone call today uh with Tricia Corbus. She is a representative at uh the U.S. uh EDA. We do some, we do anticipate submitting an EDA application on behalf of the city of Raton. You'll remember that uh we did, uh, the commission did authorize that by resolution back in November. Um, and what what our expectation is after talking to Tricia uh is an application for $3 million from EDA. That could be for construction and equipment, but I think what they would prefer is construction on the building. Um, and we did agree to a 20% match. Only a portion of that would be in cash. A a portion of that would be uh in kind. So uh, we said that the cash match would not exceed $500,000. Uh, the application we're putting together would be a cash match of $468,000. It would be my hope that uh if funded through capital outlay, we would use state dollars to meet that cash match and and then dedicate that to additional building improvements and purchase of equipment. And and what our hope is, is that in the first phase, uh, we have a uh a functioning film production and workforce development facility on the site of Kearney School. We may come back and add some things in subsequent years, but we're trying to put together uh a project worth about $5.5 million. Um, and I think for those commissioners who have participated in this conversation uh in the months leading up to the legislative session, uh, we're getting very positive feedback from uh legislators and the administration on that idea. So I would ask you to consider uh that request. And then secondly, I've included in there renovation of the Raton Community Center. That's the building that's located across from the El Portal site. Uh, many of you have looked at the building with me and with staff uh either recently or in past years. Um, the building has been neglected for many years. However, uh, the building has got value. The building is repairable. Uh, we do anticipate uh renovation of that and then possibly uh enlarging our community kitchen. The community kitchen, which operates in the convention center currently, um, I would say has generated a couple of successful businesses uh in Raton with people that got their start in the community kitchen. Uh, and that's encouraging to me. It has a lot of promise. We would transfer that equipment down to the new community kitchen if we can if we can make that uh work. So in this request of $1,500,000 would be building renovation um and uh additional kitchen equipment or kitchen construction. And I'll hold up there and answer any of your questions. Except, let me add that uh these are due by January 13th. If if you concur with the recommendations, I will submit them to Legislative Council Services tomorrow.
Yeah, I think both of these are very worthy projects and uh something that uh I'm kind of excited about.
I agree.
And as Mr. Berry stated, some of our other projects may be funded in different resources. We I had a meeting with governor, staff and mayors last Thursday talking about the infrastructure money that's coming out. And basically, they told us if you've got any projects that are shovel-ready, you're going to get funded, no matter how big, whatever it is. If it's if it's ready to go, they're just dying to give this other money away. Now, that's not capital outlay money, but that is uh another source that we could look at for other projects. I'm thinking broadband, everything, you know, so. But I support both of these projects.
I think they're great, and I think like, as Berry stated, this is a very unique year and and it's important that we go ahead and submit this.
Yes, it's not often that legislatures tell you, let's spend some money, you know?
I'll make a motion to approve the additional capital outlay funding priorities for for 2022 legislative session.
We have a motion and a second to uh, excuse me, approve the additional capital outlay funding priority. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. 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 Motion carries. Thank you. Item H, deliberate and act on grant agreement between city of Raton and CYFD agreement number 21-690-3200-2841 for short cycle funding. Michael Ann?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, you'll see in your packet, we've provided you uh with email correspondence that we've had with CYFD. Uh, we were notified last week that our short cycle application that you'll recall we approved, I think, back in November, was approved, and we're going to be awarded an additional $54,228. Um, I did have some correspondence with them just prior to this meeting. We uh put a draft of the amendment in your packet in anticipation of having the signed contracts from CYFD today. However, um, they are still delayed in their legal department. So we're going to request postponement of this tonight until the 25th. Um, but we could certainly still discuss it uh since we do know that the amount will be $54,228. So I've also provided you a summary which breaks down um the allocation of the funds. So that'll award an additional $6,600 to our continuum coordinator and then another $45,000, $45 to HRDA, who is our subcontractor for the Girls Circle Program. And then um we have the 5% admin fee that's calculated on our total awards. So that would go to the city for our administration as the fiscal agent, and that's $2,583. So that'll increase our FY22 budget for this program to a total of $172,878. Um, it also does increase the required 40% match, which we do meet through in-kind uh services. So it's not a cash match. Um, and we monitor that every month. So um, so we will anticipate having this to you for the January 25th meeting. Um, we will also have to postpone the next item, which was the amendment to the subcontract with HRDA for their services as well.
Alrighty, thank you. Any questions or comments for Michael Ann? I would make a recommendation in on the motion that we make the motion to postpone items H and I at the same time.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone items H and I concerning the grant agreement between city of Raton and CYFD. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. 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 Pose. Motion carries. Item J, deliberate and act on American Rescue Act Funding Transfer Agreement between city of Raton and Raton Public Service for Hardship Waiver Program. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, back in December, I did bring a resolution to the commission to consider uh this item. And uh primarily, what your consideration is, and that resolution was passed by the commission, um, is to transfer $75,000 of the uh funds that came to the city from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 uh to Raton Public Service Company. That and then ask them to allocate that money fairly to those in need uh who have an issue with the uh condition of their existing service and the ability to install a uh the advanced metering infrastructure that RPS has been working on. Uh, while we did take action on the resolution, uh, I we we do have to uh have a mechanism to go to the Raton Public Service Company Board. It makes sense that we would uh reduce those terms to the agreement that you have in your packet. So essentially, I'm asking the commission for uh the the same consideration that we had back in December, uh, your consideration of the funding transfer agreement for $75,000 to Raton Public Service Company. We do have uh Dave Piancino, general manager of RPS. Uh, he did give us some information on how that would be applied at that time, and he's available to answer any questions that you might have about how that system works uh again for this item. And then I would anticipate that RPS uh would, the RPS board would consider this agreement at their uh January meeting as well, which will be held in a couple of weeks. So we'll wrap it up and we'll make the transfer upon your concurrence.
Alright, thank you. Dave, you have any comments?
I don't know, just uh other than thank you. You know, I know there's quite a few uh customers out there that are in need for that service out there.
Alrighty. Any other discussion comments from Mr. Berry or Mr. Piancino?
How the contract looked really good, and we had already discussed this, so I'd be happy to make a motion to approve that funding transfer agreement between the city and RPS for the American Rescue Act.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the funding transfer agreement. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. 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 Pose. Motion carries. Item K, deliberate and act on Resolution 2022-2, approval of November 2021 financial report. Michael Ann?
Uh, Mayor Commission, in your packet is our November report. We bring this to you this evening since we didn't have the second meeting uh in December due to the holidays. So if we look at our general fund summary as of November 30th, um, our available cash, which is less the required 1/12 reserve, is $2,094,003. Um, I've also given you the cash balances and the remainder of our various funds. And then as far as the gross receipts collected for the months of December, you'll see that uh we are 7.5% above our uh FY22 budget projection in the general fund. So as we've discussed at previous meetings, um, you know, this would reflect the October business activity, which would include still quite a bit of construction. Uh, because we've had such good weather, the construction pretty much uh, I think, went on through the month of November. And then, of course, we kind of still have that unknown on the new online sales tax, which we probably started seeing around the month of September. So um, I think, you know, we're going to keep collecting the data through the winter months now that construction has slowed, and we'll kind of see where we're at and maybe have a better understanding, especially with the uh Christmas holiday. I'm sure that the online uh sales were quite high for our area. So um, hopefully, in the next couple of months, we'll have a little bit more data to offer to you in respect to where we think we're at with grocery receipts. Um, I've also included in your packet the uh gas tax comparison, which we've been tracking. Um, and you'll see that uh for the month of December, uh, the check that we received was pretty consistent with the last year. And so overall, we're still seeing an increase in that revenue source. And then also the lodgers tax comparison. Um, this one uh really, I don't want to say that it's unusually high, but because this industry was so severely impacted during COVID, it's kind of hard to look at last year's figures. So if we kind of look at more the pre-COVID, which would probably be the 2018, 2019, because I think the pandemic started in the latter part of 2020. But um, actually, no, January of 2020. So, or March 2020 was, okay. So um, I think looking at that, what we've discussed at the lodgers tax board meeting is it's difficult to know if that's an increase in heads and beds or if it's just an increase in the individual establishment's rates. And so we do know that there have been some rate increases uh within the lodging uh businesses that we have here in Raton. But uh, we are seeing some additional revenue. And so you'll see in our budget adjustment requests this evening, we are looking to adjust. we are looking to adjust that based on this collection history that we're seeing for this fiscal year.
All righty, thank you. Any questions for Michael Ann? A motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-02, the approval of the November financial report.
I just wanted to make one other comment on the financial report. Under the police grants, which is our Fund 209, that is showing as a negative $70,000. We did issue the check to the vendor, and then we submitted for reimbursement. And so those were capital outlay funds for the new CAD system in the police department. So we did receive those funds in the month of December and did release the check to the vendor. So you'll see on the December report that that is no longer reflecting as a negative amount.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item L, deliberate and act on Resolution 2022-3, Budget Adjustment Number 6, Fiscal Year 22. Michael Ann?
Mayor and Commission, I did give you a revised budget adjustment that should have been at your chair prior to the meeting. You'll see that several months ago, we did receive a tax and revenue settlement. And so I would like to include that money, which was $53,215, into our general fund revenues. And then I'll also be utilizing some of those funds just to offset some increases that we've got. We are requesting $10,000 for some improvements at the animal shelter due to some damages during that windstorm that we had about a month ago. So we will be looking to do some improvements there. And then with the increase that we've seen in the grocery receipts, I had under-budgeted the grocery receipts tax admin fees, so I've been making adjustments to that line item. Also, the airport pavement rehab project, that's been completed. We are requesting a temporary transfer so that we can pay the contractor, and that was just pending receipt of the reimbursement from the state aviation. Most of these grant reimbursements were delayed in the month of December, I believe, due to the holidays. So we actually just received those funds this past week. So we'll do another manual check to refund the general fund for that amount. Also, looking at the lodgers tax, we do anticipate, just kind of monitoring the trend that we're seeing, the $400,000 in revenue was a pretty conservative figure. And so we do anticipate that this year, our collections will probably be over $500,000. And so that gives us an opportunity to have some additional funding, not only for funding our local events, but then also looking at our tourist-related facilities. We would be able to fund that Phase 2 boiler project at the convention center. And then also, the city manager has asked me to include $25,000, which would be used for some improvements in renovation to the bathrooms at the Welcome Center. So, and then any additional funds would just go into our reserves and could be utilized for any future adjustments that we may have. Other than that, I did go ahead and put the additional funding, the $54,228 for the juvenile justice. So we'll go ahead and keep that in there, because we do know that is the amount of the award. And other than that, I think we just had some basic line item adjustments. And then we did receive, on the second page, you'll see, we received some emergency funding to replace the boiler at the senior center. So we would include that in our budget as well.
All righty, thank you. Any questions or comments for Michael Ann? Or do they maintain a motion?
No move.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-3, Budget Adjustment Number 6, Fiscal Year 22. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And that brings us to item M, City Manager Report. Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Mayor. A little mini brief here. On the project infrastructure front, we have issued a notice to proceed for greenhouse construction that will be built in the area of the Armex Building. The contractor says that they will have the greenhouse operational by around the 1st of July, so that's a fairly aggressive schedule. Also, we have conducted a pre-construction conference on the airport hangar project. The issue there is getting the steel building package. We're kind of at the mercy of the supply chain on that, so we'll get some clarification on when the clock starts to run on that and issuance of a notice to proceed. But we're on board. The contractor has the ability to order the building. We'll look at that during, well, we have until the end of November to complete that project. So we'll move that project along as well. As Michael Ann said, we have wrapped up the taxi waiter construction project, resurfacing project. And we really just need this to schedule the flight check on the PAPI, something we've talked about for a long time. That's difficult, because the flight check is provided by FAA, and so you operate on their schedule. We had that scheduled at one time, and bad weather canceled that off, and we've not been able to get back to it. So that's a few things going on at the airport and in general with construction. A lot of the paving and concrete projects have been idled during the cold weather, the snow, and around the holidays, so we'll see that schedule pick back up, I think, as we get into the later part of winter. I did attend a meeting today on Zoom. It's a pre-application meeting with Tricia Corbus, U.S. EDA. That's in relation to the Kearney School that I reported to you earlier. We would anticipate submission of that grant agreement on or before January 28th. And then very positive comments from EDA on our project. It is a program that is specific to bringing economic development to coal-impacted communities. That's the program that we're applying for of numerous programs through EDA. And our funding level will depend on what the competition is for those funds. So I'll keep you posted on that. I do plan to attend the Summit on City Infrastructure. That is a summit that was organized by Governor Michelle Luhman-Grisim. It's something that the mayor and I have talked about for a while. We learned today that it will not be held live, but it will be held by Zoom. It will feature comments by our federal delegation, cabinet secretaries, the mayor's caucus. That will be held pretty much all day on Friday, the 14th. So I'll report back to you on that. The governor has organized this, as we said, an unusual year with a lot of funding around. And the governor has expressed, as the mayor stated to you, that they're interested in getting that out and building some infrastructure. And the key words are, it's shovel-ready. So we'll get more information on all the various programs. One program specifically that we want to get information on is the potential for broadband improvements. So we've had some very limited success on broadband improvements, but we're really looking for that way to really bring faster broadband citywide. So I'll look for that, and we'll report back to you on that as well. That's all I have, Mayor.
All righty, thank you. Hey, any other comments, Commissioner Chatterley?
I will not be at our next meeting and will be unable to attend by phone.
Okay, Commissioner Jacomo. Commissioner Chavez?
Mr. Berry, we haven't mentioned anything about the brewery out there and the electricity to them. Is it coming along pretty good?
I sort of brought that up with the commission. I have laid out a schedule for bidding and construction of the electrical improvements. It's a fairly aggressive schedule. I would plan to, and I don't have that here with me, I will report to the commission, but we would plan to put this out for bid quickly, and then bring a bid for your consideration within the scheduled time. I think we have one of the February meetings that we want to bring it to the commission, get into construction, and complete construction during late spring or early summer. So I will schedule a meeting with the operators out there later in the week, with the co-op with Raton Public Service Company. We have not only the three-phase service to the armory building, but also to the single-phase service to the hangar. So we've got a couple of things to talk about out there. But yes, we've adopted a fairly tight schedule to complete the electrical improvements.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mayor Proten?
I just want to say welcome back. Glad you're looking healthy and fit.
Appreciate it. It's been a journey.
Nice to have a full team again.
It is, it is. It's good to be back, and I appreciate all the well wishes and that while I was out. And thank you for taking over and doing a bang-up job.
No problem.
Just one comment, like Scott was talking about, this infrastructure summit. Former Mayor Marty Chavez is the lead on that for the governor. And in our discussions last week, specifically with broadband, they are looking for broadband projects. Said they've got an ungodly amount of money for it, and they've created a special commission to, they're committing for that, and they're wanting to spend the money, so.
Just to kind of put that into perspective, that kind of communication infrastructure in Raton currently is owned and operated by private for-profit companies. The challenge is for a public agency to get grant funding or public funding and try to funnel that to a for-profit. There's not really a mechanism to do that. You know, is there a way we can partner with those, a public-private partnership? Is there going to be legislation that would allow us to work on and improve existing infrastructure? Is there new technology coming as opposed to the fiber in the ground that we see? There's a lot of nuance to improving the broadband. And while we get that, it would be good to improve the broadband, and there's funding out there, funneling that money to a for-profit company is the challenge here.
And one thing I wanted to ask, if it was going to be in person. City of Farmington is requesting $120 million specifically for broadband. So it would be interesting to see how they're going to do that. So I want to make a call in to Nate over there, the mayor, and see exactly what they're doing. But something I think we can get a little excited about.
We need it.
Yep. Seeing no other business, this meeting is adjourned.